Hola, ¿cómo estás?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you and welcome. I know that you guys have been enjoying our wonderful students out there. They were less than a treat. But now we're gonna go ahead and begin the meeting. I would say order. The Board of Trustees of the ALEF Independent School District is now convened. I'd like to wish extended warm welcome to everyone present. Our mission in ALEF ISD is to work in collaboration with parents and community to provide an exemplary education for all students in a safe environment. As ALEF ISD Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, adopt policies, approve budgets, contracts, personnel appointments, and communicate the district vision and success to the community. It is not the role of the Board to make day-to-day operational decisions. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibilities of the superintendent. This meeting is a public meeting of the Board of Trustees, not a meeting of the public. School Board meetings are open to all who wish to attend and hear the matters discussed. Audience participation is limited to the patron presentation portions of the meeting. These proceedings are being taped and video recorded, and all recordings are posted, archived, and viewable online on ALEF ISD District website in accordance with Section 551.128 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. I respectfully ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking. Thank you for taking time this evening to join us and for your interest in ALEF Independent School District. At this time, please stand as Kim Smith, Director of Public Relations, when introducing the group leading the pledge of allegiance in the Texas pledge. And a moment of silence.
Tonight, presenting the winners, we have the Navy ROTC from Taylor High School.
Okay, three. Colors. Ready. Five. Four. Earn. Arch. Left. Left. Eyes. Right. Right. Left. Eyes. Left. Heart time. Arch. Left. Left. Eyes. 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 Left. Color guard. Hold. Present. Colors. Cut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now put in Texas pledge.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the United States of Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence.
Okay, wait. Colors. Ready. Cut. Right. Place. Four. Earn. Arch. Left. Left. Eyes. 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 Left. Eyes. Left. 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 Color guard. Hold. For earn. Close.
And how about a round of applause for Taylor High School.
You might be seated.
You might be seated.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Chambers to present the board recognition.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. First, before we start, I was gonna make sure we recognize our... If you were here earlier, you've heard the Elsinont High School marquee band performing. There was all of them, but it was a large portion of that group. So I know they had to go. I think they had another performance or another function they participated in this evening. So we're in high demand. Do you think you can be sure and tell them? All of us, we appreciate it. An extremely talented gentleman, and thank you very much. We also had, now Kim, you have to give me the names, I don't have the names. We had our ALEF Idol winners, both the elementary division and the secondary division. Are they still here?
We had Jada Strickland. She was our elementary champion Idol winner. And then we had Brian Bond from Kerr High School. He was our high school winner.
Thank you, thank you. So if you did get to hear Jada or Brian, that's no short of the talent in High School District. So thank you very much for that. We have a recognition that we want to bring to the Board and the community this evening. And I'm gonna ask Coach Chizzo Cox, the head side coach at Elsinont High School, to come to the podium and make a recognition to the Board on behalf of one of the student athletes at the Elsinont High School summer program. So Coach Cox, thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, thank you guys for having us. I wanna, as Mr. Chambers said, I wanna bring a recognition to a young man that when I look at him, and I think back at myself as a teenager, I see none of me inside of him. And from the compliments from all of the teachers that I've gotten from him, and you think about the student athlete, and so there are some kids who are very talented and they're still in class, they're unmotivated, you gotta stay on them. And, you know, the few years that I've had to work with him, I've heard the same thing from every teacher. And this is apart from the athletic part, the same thing from every teacher. And it's not a cliche. He comes in, he works hard. He, if he doesn't understand, he asks questions. And apart from him to tell you a little bit about his individual personal character, if you look at his attendance, he has never been late. He has missed school. One time, for a few... He is on time, and his attendance is outstanding. He's the first one in practice. He's dressed out. He's everything that you can ask for in a kid. And I get a lot of kids who are similar to that, but on the talent side, sometimes it doesn't, it doesn't match, you know, the inner drive, you know, for excellence. And so, you know, I wish I would've been like that as a young man, and I'd have someone stay on me. And so, that's, that's one side. Then you have this athletic side again, where he's been growing, and he's been developing, and he's been building, and his reputation nationally is getting bigger and bigger. And it's a little too soon to come to a conclusion because he's about beginning his junior year. But as a freshman, he was, he was almost pretty close to being All-American amongst all of, you know, all of the United States. You're talking twenty, twenty-seven thousand odd high schools and so. And then when you're in Texas, this is the most difficult division, you know, of the fifty states that we have in our union to compete in, and just by the end of it, we're at the highest level. So just to speed it up, and you know, when you think about teaching and development, you love for your child to come home with As. But it would be a shame for your child to come home with As and then they haven't learned as what you'd like them to learn to match the As. And so, with Mano, he gets the result, but question after question after question, just like in class, we're developing him as a player. Because some games, he's known for scoring his goals, but there have been games where he doesn't score goals. But he's developed, and he's done everything right. And I would be happy to have a child who, he got it deep, but he learned something as opposed to a kid who got an A. And it's clueless, he went to flight school, got an A, doesn't have a name or a name. I wouldn't want to be on that plane. So with that said, he's on track, you know, and it's, we don't coach to get the result all the time. You know, we coach for the development, just like in the classroom, but he's on track to finish possibly as, you know, maybe like one of the highest scorer that we have in the school's history, which is, we have like one of the top, you know, historic school records in ALEF history, well, in Texas State history. And so, he's a part of that. So he doesn't get me, he already says too much like this about him. But I really do want to take time and honor him. He was given this All-American honor, and he's gonna go and compete. And it's gonna be a national televised game. They're picking the best eleven greatest in the nation, to be coached by all US national team players. And it's gonna be nationally televised on ESPN. He's gonna represent our community here, our school, the Board, everyone that we have, everything about ALEF. And I'd like to introduce to you Mano Linares. Do I bring him over here? That's it, bro. There's more, buddy, there's more.
Mano, congratulations. Mano, I know you've got some folks living here tonight, this evening. But I'm sure that I've had... You're okay, Coach. Your imprint is also, Mano, I know you have some folks here this evening supporting you. Would you like to recognize any recognition, please? So the family, stand up. Thank you very much. Thank you for being here.
I do wanna say, I'm thankful they got brought here. And I wanna thank my family and the ones who supported me through this journey. And I wanna just, I wanna thank y'all for thinking.
And so, you're a junior right now, huh? So we got two more seasons with you. Coach Cox. Congratulations. And thank you for representing not only your family, but your school, your school district, and people that join, and know you, you and your teammates have had a tremendous impact on representing us in the most classy, the most... I know you're not a professional, I can't say that, it'll get you in trouble. In a way in which many adults, I wish we're back to be able to, well, so congratulations. And thank you for being here. Is that your little brother?
My nephew.
Oh, your nephew?
I'm an aunt cousin.
You're right, my man. I keep an eye on him. Y'all didn't see him doing this right here. Alright, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna ask that Ms. DeJones count and ring the donation report, please.
Mr. Chambers, board members, and guests, donations for December 2018. $175,000 Shell Oil Company, ALEF ISD. $38,000 Houston Food Bank Global Market, ALEF ISD. $30,000 Purdue, Brandon Fielder, Collins and Mott, ALEF ISD. $30,000 Be an Angel, Sicko, ALEF ISD. $15,600 Psycho Houston, UNE. $15,000 Psycho Houston, Kern. $15,000 Houston Food Bank, ALEF ISD. $14,900 Psycho Houston, Kathleen. $14,800 Psycho Houston Smith. $10,000 Psycho Houston, Landis. $10,000 Psycho Toyota, Stan's House Shoes, ALEF ISD. $10,000 Best Buy Foundation, Army. $7,000 Southern House, Bunn, Banning Foundation, HESD. $7,000 Southern Club, Houston Food Bank, KFC, Berlin, ALEF ISD. $7,000 Southern Club, Psycho Houston, RIS. $1,000 Psycho Houston Food Bank Teacher Aid Program, ALEF ISD. $4,300 for our adventure cafe, ALEF ISD. $2,836.52 Bush Family, Bush. $2,701.82 Donald's Shoes, Albright. $2,200 Houston Harley. Hungry Harris Pizza, ALEF ISD. $2,000 Morning Dogma Shop, ALEF ISD. $1,998.65 Donald's Shoes, Chancellor. $1,848 First Book and DVD Discount Stores, Bloom. $1,812.61 Mrs. Kelly McLean, Miller. $1,780 Mary, Miss Mary Bloom, Best. $1,600 Psycho Toyota, Elsie. $1,509.46 Donald's Shoes, Cummings. $1,500 Todd Family Foundation, Horn. $1,500 Shell Oil Company, Hugo Program, Taylor. $1,455 Houston West Chase Order Club, ALEF ISD. $1,350 Walmart West Sam Houston Parkway South, Landis. $1,000 Miss Gina Spring, Elsie. $961.85 Donald's Shoes, Kathleen. $839.50 Professor Young, Best. $802.11 HEB West Ham, Kirkwood, ALEF ISD. $800 Church Without Walls, Landis. $700 Trolley Corporation, Miller. $507 Miss Monica Patel, Outlin. $500 Taste of Texas, Kern. $500 Mr. Kent E. Dowling, ALEF ISD. $500 Excellent Mobile Education Alliance, Kern. $500 Broke Up Online Website, Landis. $500 Daniel Chair Business Incorporated, Chambers. $500 HEB Bel Air, Henry Sixth, Chancellor. Grand Toll, $4,400, $48,000, $680, $23,000.
With that, I ask for our motion to approve the donation report. Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Bro and seconded by, after all, in favor. $700, thank you, Ms. Jones. That was a mouthful of statements.
Today, I would like to honor two business partners. Ms. Kelly McLean recently donated computers and technology equipment to Miss Gito's class at Millie and Jimmy's School, as noted on the donation report. Ms. Kelly, please come forward and be recognized.
Thank you, guys, for your support.
Next, I would like to honor and thank Shell Technologies Center, Mr. Warren Martin Robinson, Inter-Relation Projects and Technology Specialist. Shell Technology provided internships for our students, donated various equipment, and provided funding for special properties, as noted on the donation report tonight. This year, Shell has donated over $250,000 to our school district in various forms. I would like to invite Mr. Warren Robinson to come forward, and he has a check.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, for working with our business partners and the recognitions and all of your efforts, we really do appreciate it. Board, I would like to make an adjustment to the agenda if it's okay with you all. I would like to move to item number eight, and then come back up to item number five, if that is okay with you all. So at this time, is there any item on the consent agenda in which Board members would like to have a call for discussion? Is there any item on the consent agenda?
I make motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, it's been moved by Ms. Moreno to put the consent agenda, I have second. It's been seconded by Mr. Williams. All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Seven to zero, thank you, Board.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And Board, before we move on, I'm gonna recognize and introduce a new administrator that you just approved, Ms. Vicki Washington. Where's Vicki? There she is. Could you stand? Vicki has been, she has been... Vicki's getting ready to make a major adjustment in her role over to the Hastings Math Grade Center as an assistant principal. Ms. Washington started Albright Middle School in 2005 as an English teacher and a coach in coaching after-school sports and activities. The same year, she received her master's in curriculum and instruction from the University of Houston. In 2012, she received a second master's degree in the Education Administration at the University of Virginia. In 2014, while serving as an English teacher, she was named Teacher of the Year for Albright Middle School. In 2016, Ms. Washington was asked to teach DE and continue in this certain role. This past summer, she served as an administrative role at Hastings Math Grade Center during the Taylor High School Summer School Program. And I know that the Hastings Math Grade Center is glad to have you currently as administrator on that campus. So thank you, Ms. Washington, and congratulations. Do you have some family members or some friends that you'd like to introduce?
I do, I have my twin sister Leslie, my cousin, my amazing nephew.
Dressed very appropriately. Very sharp, very sharp. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations, on the board. So at this time, if you guys wanna take a few seconds to meet and greet, we're gonna give you about three minutes, and I promise you, three minutes. Then we're gonna move on to the agenda, thank you. Yeah, everyone, escape, wanna make your escape now. Thank you, everyone. I know that we're all excited about this holiday season, and we're happy to see a lot of people we haven't seen in a while. So I'm excited, I wanna come and talk to you guys, but I'm trying to be discreet. So, but thank you guys for being here. I'm gonna go ahead and move on, Board. We're at item number five, which is the patron presentation portion of the meeting. The Board encourages and welcomes comments and inputs from our patrons, but we cannot respond, deliberate, or decide regarding any subject that is not included on the posted agenda. Please limit your comments to five minutes, and please be reminded, Board calls to prohibit the mentioning of an employee's name when voiced in concern or it comes to light. At this time, we have a presentation. Mr. Arthur Robinson from ATSTA.
My name is Arthur Robinson. In my position, I am local vice president for our president, Wanda Wyden. I'm also on the state board and director for the entire state of Texas. And I am the president of Region 14, which is all of ALEF ISD, all the ISDs, all the way to Galveston. That's why you haven't really been seeing me, because I've been trying to build other locals. Tonight, I come to you with a concern that staff members and non-members have come to me. Wanted me to speak to you tonight about, if you look in front of your folders, which the audience cannot see, it says, the student learning environment and student structure is being extremely offended, affected, okay, and in jeopardy. What's going on here is the district, we work under, we're violating, okay, the Paper Reduction Act. That's the nickname we gave it. It's actually on the second page, if you look at it, comes down from TDA to state. It talks about the writing, reports, and paperwork. And it itemized the things, paperwork and data that teachers can't do. All that other stuff that's been added, we're out of compliance. For instance, number one, SLO, it came down. There was a reason, it was in litigation on those domains. We have four, that's the new evaluation school that they use to evaluate us teachers. That one was not used because it was held up in litigation. And SLO is student learning objectives. Everyone wants student learning objectives. But the state said that these objectives, this data, this information needs to be... There needs to be a... There needs to be a growth shown by the district. It did not stipulate that teachers are supposed to do it, which is what we're doing with most of the schools in this district. It actually didn't say. It just said, "This growth needs to be shown." You can use other than teachers, non-instructional staff, and campus administrators, and specialists to help do this. One school that I found, KISS, they got the right idea. That's what they did, okay? I wish the rest of the district could come on with this. We ask you from your, yeah, Board, to make sure you get out there and get some of this paperwork that's redundant on our teachers. Other issues that are plaguing the teachers, lesson plans. When I was in HISD under Mr. Page, who became the secretary of state up in Washington DC, he took out the lesson plans. If we're going to do lesson plans, okay, we should be, adopt a policy where those plans are done by a departmental because they, all these English teachers together, they should be planning together. Bright minds, more than one together. They should be done monthly, not daily, and not weekly. That frees up some time for them because they don't have planning time. There are some schools, they have no conference. I fought against that innovation, okay? I fought against that because they said to be flexible and if needed. Whereas some schools, it must not be needed because they don't have conference times. And I have the school's name. I have people here, I've been saying, "Help some of your teachers to come." I have teachers or staffs here tonight, and they truly believe. There's a burden on them, okay? Community involvement. T-Test, the new evaluation tool. They're one domain that asks for community involvement. It does not stipulate how many activities, okay? How many activities? You've got one school here, which I complained to Ms. Powell and said, hey, nineteen? And then when she heard about it, she went back and changed it to fourteen. That's in excess, okay? That's too many, okay? That's another thing. Also, duties. We have duties. I'm okay with duties. Same people should not be doing the duties in the same school all day, every day. Teachers have to do tutorials. Every student that you put with that college prep through PRR, this young man that was recognized tonight, every student, asking the most important reasons for them is these teachers and coaches that are out there. They cannot do it without them. If they think they can, they're misled. None of them can do it without teachers. That is the main group here. Your bus drivers and teachers and secretaries, that's what runs this district. They need your help. With your help, we ask for the school force to get involved. Go out there and look. We know that we can ask for you to go and look at this redundant paperwork that's going on, grades. If a parent can go online and look at the grades and attendance, why are we having teachers doing all that? Now, I know that list says attendance, but I'm talking about calling home, phone calls on attendance. Phone calls on grades. Parents can go online and look at that. That can free those teachers up, okay? Also, conference peers I was talking about, some of them don't have it, and the ones that do have it. There's one school, they need every single day. Every single day, okay? And I don't want to share this with you, and not private in the meeting, and people there talk to you, tell you. Some schools, they don't even get that. And we expect them to be able to go home to their own families, okay? And support their... I mean, okay. And the new title for new senior students, it's good that you've got your title set. Please get involved, school board members. Thank you very much.
Mr. Robinson, I want to say thank you so very much. The Board has a copy of Robinson.
You're welcome.
And I follow the notice you were speaking.
Yeah, thank you, ma'am.
At this time, Board, keeping with the agenda, we're going to go ahead and move down to board member training. At each time this year, we have to report out training that has been taken by board members. Do we have it on the overhead or on the screen? Give me one second here. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and begin. Do you all have any copies? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and begin. Board member Darlene Rowe has met all of the requirements in excess of forty-four, point five hours. Natasha Butler has met all requirements with an excess of twelve point five. Jennifer Key has met all requirements with an excess of eighteen point seven five. Mr. Moreno has met all the requirements with an excess of seventeen point seven five. Mr. John Nguyen has met all the requirements with an excess of forty point two five hours. Dr. Lily Trump has met all the requirements with an excess of twenty-eight point five. Myself, Anne Williams, has met all the state requirements with an excess of twenty-five point twenty-five. So, and I don't remember... Any comments the board members would want to make? I would like to make my comment and say that I'm very pleased with the work and effort that the Board has done. When I see that being hours in excess of what the state requires, it means a lot. It means that we are really committed in taking your role and position and your need to know very seriously. So thank you so very much, everyone, who met the requirements and have exceeded that. Anyone else? If there's no one else. Mr. Chambers, do you need a ticket?
Board, your next agenda item is the Board selecting officers for the upcoming calendar year. And this is typically done in December after a November election date. It's a regular election in November. This is the time in which the annual officer selection is made by the local trustees. And so with that, I will entertain the selection of the president because the Board is not able to recommend that you can start at that point. I started at that point. And so just so the community knows, I will entertain the presidential nomination and selection. And from that position at that point, the Board President will take over. With that, I would entertain the motion for the President of the Ebbyville Municipal District Board of Trustees for the year 2019.
I'd like to make the nomination.
Lady Faustra.
Sure.
Dr. Trump.
I would like to nominate Anne Williams as the Board President.
Yes, Dr. Trump has made a nomination of Anne Williams as Board President.
I second that.
Mr. Moreno is second. There's a conversation, any discussion on Ms. Williams' nomination?
Actually, discussion, maybe, on the thing. I know Ms. Williams, I've known you for eleven years, gone on twelve years. And always been great on things. But I think that this last year, with the four additional new board members, have really done a lot, a lot to bring everybody together and really going forward. And so I think in the interest of the district and the Board and the community, you know, I would totally support you to really continue our honor for itself.
Can you add comments or discussion on the nomination and second on the floor? Do we have any other nominations? Do we look to have any other nominations? Here you have, all in favor of Anne Williams serving as Board President for Ebbyville ISD for 2019, please read it. Seven to zero. Congratulations, Ms. Williams. One more time.
I want to first say thank you, Board, for your confidence and everything. And more importantly, I cannot do this job by myself. Thank you for being, as I said earlier, committed to your roles and to our community and everything that you do. So thank you for this opportunity. And please, we're going to mark this legislative session on board. And as we saw the other day, if no one else is there, Ailee is there. So thank you so very much. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and continue with the nominations. I'll entertain a nomination for a vice president of our Board.
Does it have to nominate Darlene Rowe for vice president?
Okay. We have Darlene Rowe for vice president. Is there another nomination for Darlene Rowe?
I'll second that.
All right, and we have a nomination for Darlene Rowe. Ms. Rowe, are we willing to enable? Yes. And I say that because we do have a board and some people, you know, want them to say, "What could I have done?" So that's why I'm being very transparent to say, you know, if you're willing to enable to do that. All right. Are there any other discussions? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All in favor of Darlene Rowe becoming vice president? Yes, you can vote for yourself. Yes, ma'am. Okay. So that's seven oh, Darlene Rowe for vice president. I'll entertain a nomination for secretary. Is there a nomination for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Lily Trump.
On that, I would like to second that nomination for Dr. Lily Trump as secretary. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other nomination? No other nomination? All in favor of Dr. Trump becoming secretary again? Yes, you may. Seven oh for Dr. Trump being secretary. Thank you. I'll call for a nomination for assistant secretary. Is there... May I have a second? Okay. So it's been by Dr. Trump and seconded by Mr. John Nguyen. Are there any discussions? Any discussions? Is there any other nomination? No other nominations? All in favor of Ms. Jennifer Key being assistant secretary? It's shown that it's seven oh. All right, Board. I think that's all the officers. So congratulations to everyone. Thank you. All right, everybody. That only begins... It's only the beginning. Okay. That now takes us to item number nine, everyone, on our agenda. Number nine on the agenda, and Mr. Woods, Annual Financial Accountability Management Report. Thank you.
Yes, Board, thank you. Annually, we're required since the passage of Senate Bill 218, 2001, to report our annual financial accountability report at a public meeting. And that has occurred at the first meeting available to us since the final ratings came out, which was last month. And so now I'm going to turn it over to Shannon Rolthing, our lead accountant, to give us the particulars on the report and our rating this year.
So are you going to read all of that to us?
I don't think I've ever seen you come on a full like that.
No, I won't read all of it. Okay, as Mr. Woods mentioned, I'm going to discuss Ailee's rating on the state's financial accountability system. The system is known as Schools First, and the goal is to assess the quality of financial management of Texas schools. The 2018 rating is based on 2016-17 data. And Ailee received the highest rating for the sixteenth year in a row since the system was implemented. So we've received a superior rating this year. There are fifteen indicators on the rating worksheet. The first five are critical, which means that a negative response to any of them results in an automatic substandard achievement rating. These indicators test things such as, did we file our annual financial report on time? Did we default on any of our bonds? Did we make timely payments to TRS and other government agencies? And did our total assets exceed our total liabilities? The next ten indicators are less critical, but are still very important. Indicators six through ten test things such as, how long can we pay bills without receiving new revenues? Did current assets exceed our current liabilities? And did we have enough money to pay for our current debt obligations? Number eleven, even though the section on the administrative cost ratio in the Texas Education Code was repealed, DEA still uses this as one of the indicators. And this ratio is basically just a measurement of the percentage of expenditures spent on central administration. For districts of our size, the administrative cost ratio should be below point zero eight five five. And Ailee was well under this threshold at point zero four five four. Number twelve, Ailee's student to staff ratio was well within the fifteen percent threshold for this indicator. Indicator thirteen, make sure that the data reported to the state through the PMS system in the annual financial report don't have significant differences. The only differences that we had were very small and were due to rounding. And Ailee had no disclosures of material non-compliance with laws, rules, and regulations in our 2016-17 audit report. And Ailee did not receive an overpayment of state funds as a result of a financial hardship. Once again, Ailee has received awards from GFOA and ASMO for financial reporting and for budget presentation. The state has also awarded stars to the district for financial and debt transparency. And all of these awards and recognition demonstrate the financial strength of the district. There are some additional disclosures in our report, such as the superintendent's contract and reimbursement received by the superintendent and board members. And we wanted to make you guys aware of some changes to Schools First that have been adopted for the 2021 rating, which would be based on 2019-20 financial data. So this is a couple of years away. But we just wanted to make you aware of changes that are coming. The current rating worksheet, like I mentioned, has fifteen indicators. And the 2021 rating worksheet will have twenty indicators. The point scales will be different for the ratings. So for example, you'll have to have at least seventy points to receive a C rating, where in the past, you only had to have sixty points. And then six of the twenty indicators will be ceiling indicators, which just adds an additional... Adds additional criteria to the indicator. And if school districts don't meet the ceiling criteria, they'll be assigned a maximum score and rating. So for example, one of the indicators that we looked at earlier was the difference between the PMS information and the annual financial report. If that is three percent, or if there's a difference of three percent or more, then the highest rating that you could receive, the ceiling on that, would be eighty-nine points. So under the old system, you would still, if you didn't meet that indicator, you could still lose ten points and get a ninety. But under the new system, the ceiling says you could only get eighty-nine points. So the maximum score, even if you scored perfectly on everything else, would be B, above standard. We run the data for the 16-17 fiscal year and 17-18 fiscal years through this new rating system. And Ailee will still receive the highest rating. We also plan to monitor data for future fiscal years and make financial decisions to ensure that we will continue to receive the highest rating under the new worksheet. And at this time, I'll take any comments or questions that you guys may have.
Does this rating, I know that the county Board always gives... Do the ratings affect our bond standing? The financial transparency?
If we have lower ratings, they definitely work. But with our ratings, that's one more add to our high bond rating cost. But it's kind of two completely different systems.
Shannon, I had a... You mentioned that there are some changes. Could you address that again for me, please? Because I'm trying to see if that connects to some information that we received in the training. Is that the same? Could you elaborate on that again? Because I think most board members are probably on here and they're not understanding.
Okay, so currently, the rating worksheet has twenty indicators. And, I'm sorry, fifteen indicators. And the new rating worksheet will have twenty. So one of the indicators, they... Number two had a part A and a part B. And they separated that out to two different indicators. And then they've added a couple other indicators to the worksheet.
Did you present what those other indicators were?
I did not. I can definitely get that information to you guys. It's, you know, since it was two... It's, you know, since it was two years away, I didn't put that in this presentation.
Yeah, the excitement is, is two years away. But two years is an opportunity for the board to start, our individuals to start communicating about it. Because I think myself and Miss Bro, Ms. Key, were in one of those required trainings where we would give this information. And the concern was, and correct me if I'm wrong, I... There was something that was mentioned that even in a movement like classroom size is a big issue. And there was something stated about even with the classroom size change could impact because of those new indicators that are built. So, Mr. Woods, have you heard anything about that? Because they were saying about, you know, the money movement, how that impacts.
Right, so the ratios, there's a few more ratios included. But I think the way we currently are configured and have budgeted, we should be fine to continue in that A class. So we're watching it. And we can definitely prize you of those indicators in the board notes and say that, you know, these would be the ones that would be affecting if we made a change to, let's say, pupil teacher ratios at the middle school. Or the number of cash days on hand. It was always up for grabs every legislative session. Are they going to extend it? Or do they want to shrink it, you know? You know, they want to have less fund balance, but at the same time, they want to have more cash on hand. So...
Yeah, so it was one of those things, Mr. Woods, that sounds like we need to tell the board that the sky will be falling, which we really appreciated that. I mean, I wouldn't want, two years...I would like to talk about things now. So when that moment came, you know, went prepared. But it was something that, you know, at some point, you're going to need to communicate it to your community too. Because even if you, I think that they were talking about changing the funding patterns, something about if you, what was it, received some certain funds early that they would impact you as well. Because it would look as if you had new money on top of the money.
Right, so in that case, unless they changed the funding pattern for districts of our size, then we wouldn't be affected by that. Those are some of the smaller districts. They get a lot of their funds upfront. And then they have to settle up in the end. And they owe money back to the state based on their enrollment. So what I think we should do is for the retreat, when we start talking about budget for 1920, since that's the first fiscal year, it fills into those ratings. We should basically hit each one of those indicators and make sure you're covering those points for this upcoming year's budget.
The indicators are identified already, correct? So if we did a kind of a snapshot of what we are now, what if indicators, what if it would have been this year?
And we've done that.
Would it be still a superior rating?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at the notes and talking about the cash on hand and your fund balance. If you reduce your classroom sizes, that it could be a negative impact to you. Things like, right now, 98% of school districts are getting As. But once this indicator goes into place, it could also, you know, change your rating. So those are kind of the things we want to know. Because, you know, people will see that as having gotten As all these years, but...
Well, that's why we were saying we run our current year data through the system to make sure that we will still get As. So we don't have a high level of concern that it's going down right up.
But during budget time, this coming 1920, we'll hit all those points and make sure again to show you that we're going to maintain.
Thank you so much, Shannon. I appreciate you, but it was like, wait a minute. We really wanted to make sure that you...
I'm sorry. I did have just one quick question, just in regards to the... I don't know if you can explain it a little better? Because I'm just not quite sure I'm understanding. Is the impact that the reduced class size might have on our rating? Because of course, that's reducing the class size is a concern of many parents and community members and teachers. So I just, if you could, if you're able to kind of explain that a little more so that we all hear it at the same time.
And if not tonight, Shannon? Because I already asked about those indicators that are not here. And I guess, as Mr. Woods said at retreat, we would kind of want to elaborate on that just a little bit more. The indicators?
So if you're making... Basically, what the indicators are trying to pick up are quick and out of the ordinary changes that are going to potentially make you financially unstable. So if you made a huge change in ratios, pupil teacher ratios, one way or the other, it could indicate that somebody is not doing something correctly. And you're going to way overstaff for the year, which means you're going to go on the floor. You're going to end up utilizing a lot of fund balance that year. Or vice versa, that you're not going to be having effective instruction because you made the classes too large. So it may be an indication that you don't have enough money to pay enough staff. So there's another problem. So when they say a reduction in class size, it's either direction. If there's a huge swing in either direction, that could indicate there's a problem. Same thing with fund balance. Fund balance is reduced all of a sudden X percent in one year. That could indicate financial instability, so...
And the reason they're using class size is because they've looked at districts over the last 10, 15 years who have had these swings. And typical reasoning, districts are fine if there's trouble because they're overstaffed. It's where your money is. And so you're, you know, and there's been example after example after example in the last 20 years. You either settle up, during settle up, remember, the state finally catches up and says, all right, X, Y, Z district, we've never had the number of kids here. We did deals, haven't been paying them the dollars. That tells the state a lot. That's a very telling point in any budget. Just look at staffing, look at ratios. And that's why they're paying attention to that.
Districts that have been in financial hardships, where the first report didn't pick up on that problem coming through, it's like, how can that not see? It's not a very good indicator if it's not forecasting that there's trouble.
That's why districts, if they have a, you know, if you recall, like in 2011, we cut our budget by $20 million when we first got here. The first thing you have to look at is class size. If you open, that's worth money. There's nowhere else to go. So that's what the state is. Now, I will say this in a little bit, because depending on what happens in the session, you play this out, if we don't have a positive outcome in terms of revenue, the district, there may be a lot of districts that go into conflict for the 1920 school year with whatever is going to be used to judge us in a couple of years. If they find themselves getting close to using fund balance or raising class sizes or using excess fund balance for other costs. There's a lot riding in the session.
Yeah, it kind of sounded like, I think, Mr. Woods, because that is a little more clear. It sounded like, so to speak, some districts were, I hate to say it, but like gaming the systems, so to speak, to say, you know, if I go with this amount and then I'm not using that, those funds. You know, I think that that's what the state is trying to look at too as well. So when the funding, when the funding discussions fall out from the legislation, you know, we want to know which districts are making sound. Because a lot of, we know a lot of districts are making financial decisions. And we're saying, how are you doing that? Where's your money coming from? You know? So I think that they are trying to kind of get ahead of this game.
There's ways to, and those ways will work for two or three years. But they will catch up. And that's where, you don't have to worry about that in this district. They will catch up. This will put a spot on it.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Appreciate it. I saw that stack, and I was thinking, oh my gosh, she brought everything.
But Shannon gets more, five or six years, she appears to be doing this. Shannon's more than she loves doing it. She does a good job. Shannon, thank you and your team. There's, by no accident, they received superior. We received superior later, 16 years ago.
Right. So now we're at the number 10 on the agenda, which is the Accountability Report.
Yes, good evening, Ford, Mr. Travers. Tonight, we're going to have Dr. Page. She's going to come up and report and give an accountability update on our six high priority campuses. Ms. Trane could not be here tonight, she felt ill. But we do want to continue the discussion we started with you guys. About, it's been about eight weeks, I think, since we talked about going from data to action. And now we want to talk a little bit about the action to student achievement and all the things there in between. You see that we do have our principals here tonight. We also have members, lots of members of our school improvement teams, of our coordinators and directors. Because we do know the importance of this task and what lies ahead for us. So I'm going to have Dr. Page come on up.
Thank you, Ms. Montgomery. Good evening, everyone. I want to take a look at where we are in terms of from action to student achievement. And this really is part two of our three-part series, I hope. We want to take a look at kind of the story behind those numbers that we saw earlier in the year. And what have we been doing for those students and those teachers? So where do we get our data from? Who provides our information? And you can see on the campus level, it really is those folks that are there, the students, the teachers, the administrators, interventionist specialists. We all work together to provide some information as to what's going to happen for those students. And on the district level, you can see all of the people that support those campuses in a high priority type of way because they get a little bit more attention than the other campuses do. Because they're not IR, they're HP. You'll see there also that there's directors. But not only are those directors from instruction, but we utilize human resources as well. So what data are collected? And you see that there's a variety of data sources that are collected from the students. IStation, Iready, their grades, their behavior data, their campus common assessments, their district common assessments, the targeted improvement plan, the turnaround plan. There are lots of ways that we collect those data. And then from the teachers, there are instructional walkthroughs with feedback that's given to those teachers. There's the classroom climate. There are lesson plans related to both whole group and small group. We have professional learning community meetings. We have team planning meetings. The campus common assessments, the district common assessments, and the tip and the tack. So from students and from teachers, there are a variety of data that are collected. So what are we doing differently? Well, we're taking all of that information that we have, all of, from all of those data sources, all that data that is, that are collected. And we have the district level that provides additional staff. And when we meet by that is, for instance, at the beginning of the year, if there is one of those six campuses that has a class that's maybe under 22 to 1 ratio, and we should combine the class, we allow that staff member to stay on that campus for that class ratio to be lower than maybe another campus. So we want to make certain that that additional staff stays in place. In addition, we added an administrator at SNEED Elementary to provide the kind of support that they needed at that campus. There's also prioritized support from central office. So as we go about our work day and our work week, we make certain that we take a look at what do those six campuses need? And that priority is given to them. Once again, also, we look at funds that are allocated. They are allocated to pay teachers in a way for them to have extended planning, some additional time. Because we know that these students require that planning on the part of the teachers in order for them to make that growth. And one very important aspect is to be able to take a look at all the data and look at it through the approaches, meets, and masters lens. Because we know that's what's going to make a big difference for those students. They have to move. If you recall the presentation that Ms. Martinez did when she had the little stick figures moving, that is our goal. We've got to move those students along that continuum of approaches to meets to masters. And then additionally, we provide coaches to our principals, whether it's a coach from within our district or whether it's a coach from outside. Here's a visual of the data walls. And as you'll see, that the stickies are different colors. And on each one of those stickies is a student's name and the teacher and some information about those students. And what happens is, we want to make certain that we're moving them. So as they do their district common assessments or their campus common assessments, and we're looking at it through the eyes of approaches, meets, and masters, those stickies are physically moved to make certain that they continue in the right direction. At Best Elementary, you will see that they are working on the rise reading intervention. It is an opportunity for students to have some more intensive intervention related to their reading. It's targeted students. It's for a specific period of time. And they look really closely at what's going on with the students. So you'll see some professional development and data discussion that's occurring with the teachers about their students. There's also a focus on writing at this particular campus. At Collins, you will see that they have a focus on literacy. And there is a teacher who is teaching literacy through the lens of science because they want students to understand that reading and writing are skills. They're not a subject. And that the students need to utilize their skills no matter where they are. At Cummings, you'll notice that it's an all-hands-on-deck approach. There is a focus on quality first-line instruction. So the principal is involved. The instructional leadership team is involved. We want to make certain that teachers have good role models and that the students are able to make progress because they have those role models in place. And at Horn, they have more frequent assessments that inform instruction. So once again, you see a different kind of data wall, but it's there for them. And also, they're utilizing this book, Get Better Faster, as a book study with their teachers to be able to provide the kind of instruction that's required to make growth. And at Landis, once again, it's an all-hands-on-deck, but we utilize everything that's available. So not only a focus on first-line instruction in small group, but whatever technology is available for the students to be able to make that move is utilized. At SNEED, we have small group reading. And once again, they do cross-curricular text as well. And then SAIP, I hope you remember that SAIP is related to an observation protocol. So we want to make certain that we're focusing on what the students are doing, their student discourse, what kind of work is happening for them. And someone asked about having some numbers. And so we have some numbers provided. I was really hesitant to do that because we're at a place where we're looking at the kinds of actions that are being utilized. And I don't want to really put the emphasis on the numbers, but the kind of support and the kind of actions that we're doing. However, you can see fourth grade reading. We looked at the program. You can see each one of the campuses, what their 2017 DCA percentage was, what their 2018 DCA percentage was, and what the difference is for fourth grade reading in terms of the program. You will notice also that this one with student growth analysis, that those students who were at third grade, they took that 2017 DCA 1. And now those similar students are taking that 2018 DCA 1 as fourth graders. So you'll see the difference in terms of student performance from third grade to fourth grade for each one of those campuses. And when we make that same kind of analysis across the district, the difference was zero. So when you look at Best, for instance, you'll see that at zero, they pretty much met the district average in that area. And then you look at a campus like Horn, and it was plus 23. So they were above the district average. district average. In fourth grade for mathematics, you'll see, once again, the same concept. We looked at fourth grade just as program, 2017 DCA 1, 2018 DCA 1, and what the difference was for each one of those campuses. And likewise, under student growth, the same concept occurred. Those were the third graders during the 2017 DCA 1, and those same students now as 2018, their performance in DCA 1. So in looking at all of the data, we try to determine what does it all mean? And so the central oversight committees got together, and we looked at what should we stop, what should we start, and what should we continue? So looking at what we should stop, we need to stop adding new programs. We need to stop and be focused and look to see what difference is being made for each one of those students on those campuses. We looked at stopping implementing ineffective interventions. So as we did walkthroughs in the classrooms, if we found that the interventions were not giving us the kind of growth that we needed, then we need to stop that. And we also needed to stop using anything but AMM language, because that's how we're going to be judged. So we need to make certain that as we're looking at our data, we utilize that AMM language, approaches, meets, and masters. And so what do we need to start doing? We need to start giving explicit, immediate, face-to-face feedback to teachers as required. So rather than look at all fourth grade teachers need this, we need to look at them as individuals. What's really important to that individual is going to be that face-to-face feedback, and then how they implement whatever suggestions are offered or whatever is needed. We needed to make certain that we start adjusting our intervention plans according to our campus common assessments and according to our DCA 1 data. So we have made some differences, we have made some adjustments as we're monitoring and going through those kinds of data that we looked at. And then we need to make certain that we are monitoring our higher-level questioning. How are the students taking the information that they're learning now, and how will they know to transfer it to be able to apply it when it does come time to test day or star? And what do we want to continue? So we want to continue making certain that we track that student performance in order to look at the effectiveness of the classroom intervention and classroom instruction. And I had a campus that their focus initially was small group instruction, and as they would go into the classrooms to work with the teachers on that, they noticed that overall they needed to make their focus first-line instruction. So they took that data and they made that adjustment to help the teachers to be able to be most effective. And we wanted to continue to coach principals and teachers. And we wanted to make certain that we consistently monitored iReady and iStation and RISE for usage to fidelity and for the reports, the information that we received on the students, and then what we were going to do to address that information that we found. So we still have work to do. You see the drips are still there, the ripples are still taking effect, and we want to make certain that this is just part two of our three-part program, because now we have information, we are making some adjustments, we want to work on those adjustments, we want to see what it does for those students utilizing all of those data sources that we have and make a difference for our kids when it comes time to take tests. So now I will stop and listen to any questions that you may have or comments that you'd like to share.
Well, thank you, Dr. Page. I appreciate your presentation. And I'm going to ask before the banter, so.
All data.
Yes, all data. And I really appreciate adding those slides in there. That's just kind of how my brain works, and I kind of like to see it laid out. It shows that you're really doing a lot of work and being data-driven, and also putting in what are you doing differently, what you're going to stop, continue, and all that. And I think that was part of the, a huge part of the conversation that we initially had. So I just want to say I appreciate the work that you all were doing, and I know it's not easy to kind of put all of this together for us, so I do appreciate that. I would just like to add or ask that, and I know how it is when putting in that data and you're not quite ready to share, because you're still adjusting, but that's the good thing, that you're still adjusting and making changes based on that data. And you actually kind of mentioned it on one of the slides of having then all of these campuses, okay, here's how they did, but then how do they, you know, in the context of the district, how do they compare to the district? And so for us, or I'm just gonna say me, me as a board member, then that kind of also lets me know, okay, what kind of things might be coming up for maybe additional support for those campuses and for those principals, or whatever I can do or we can do as a board to continue to trust them and give them what they need to do what needs to be done, because they're the boots on the ground every single day, and we know that they know their campuses. And so we just want to be here to support them.
And we certainly appreciate that, because basically, everybody in this audience are people who work for those campuses, and they support them by working with the teachers or the specialists or the principals. So this is really the team that's out there making a difference.
Dr. Page, I want to say that, well, two quick things. One, I appreciate what I saw in the presentation. Well, first of all, let me back up. I like the idea that our board did put forward the challenge, what are we doing different? And I could really see that you guys are trying to speak to what it is that we're doing different. The thing that I appreciated in the presentation was, what are the things that you're stopping? You know, and that means that people are being very strategic in what they're doing. That means that there has to be some measurements to decide, we're gonna stop adding new programs. That, you know, that speaks volumes right there. And implementing effective intervention, I guess at some point during retreat, we'll talk about, you know, interventions and things like that, what it is that we're doing because as we give more updates on it. So thank you so very much. And I also agree with you as well on this AMM language, because that is something with the new accountability, you know, it's kind of shocking. There are people who are still out there saying, oh, we can just increase our rates, so to speak. They're still looking at it as, you know, let's just get a group of kids and let's just, you know, make sure that they all pass. But that language of AMM, you know, and the shocking part for me is to look at that, the approaches. People are not getting, even though it's approaches and it's a standard for the state and it says when you are, you can be met on there, the truth is, our children are approaching. They haven't met it. They're not on rate level. And that's a real conversation that really needs to happen for people to really understand. So I agree that that is a language I think even our board is going to be looking at. I think I heard Ms. Butler talk about that a few times as well, on, you know, meeting and mastering, because we know that if we're looking at all the students in our district, the whole child, every child, we're looking at growth. That is what the word, that's what it's all about, it's about growth. And I look at when people would look at your gifted and talented and think, well, they're already there, and teachers focusing on everybody else with that growth, but they deserve that growth and that care too, so that AMM language really addresses that. So I just, I'm saying that, and I'm saying that to our principals that are here in the back, thank you so very much. I think it's important for you guys to be here to hear what your board is saying, to understand that they're not just a group of people who are here and listening to streets and wanting us, wanting you guys to do something different. I want you to really understand that your board does understand, we get it, we go for these trainings and we have these conversations, and it's just to help to improve, and as Ms. Bird was saying, we want you to know that we support you as well. We support our, we support our teachers' reports, we do, and I want that to be very, very clear. We support the leadership as well, and we want the district to understand that this is not something where a group of people decide that they're gonna do something, then tax a group, and the board is in the dark. We're as transparent about this as possible, and I think that Dr. Page understood that when the board said, what was it, eight weeks ago? We really wanted to know, we wanted to have a sit-down. So thank you so very much for each and every one of you being here in the back. I'm not sure the board was aware that they are here as well to get this report. So is there anything else?
I'd like to, I'd like to make comment. The part about the, what are we doing different, that's kind of like, I guess, for the last few meetings, we talked about that, that's kind of what I've always done out there, what are we doing different, what are we doing different? And I appreciate you using that as a bullet instead of, I do see some that we are doing some difference. I'm a little different than my husband ordinary here in regards to data. I'm more of a words person. As a paramedic, I'll listen to people, listen to words, and certain words will pop up, and I'm like, oh, what does that really mean? What's the hidden meaning behind that in regards to four-day being a program or doing something of that sort? So in one of them, example, I do appreciate the presentation, great information, but you're right, it's two of, maybe three, four, five, as we go on throughout this next year, going through it. This is some words, like I saw an example on the stopping, it says adding new programs. And in the last couple of meetings we've had, we're adding pre-K pilot coming future, and I brought up part about this Cummings ready. These Cummings is in the possible HP, I think it would you, you said, not IR, and it's that. So I'm getting a conflict of terminology. I'm hearing one side saying, oh yeah, Cummings is great, they can do this, it's not gonna affect their, their possible IR, but now you're saying stop programs, and it's just, it's contradicting each other. So I'd like to get some more clarification. If Cummings is really, really ready to go do that, and I'm sure the inputs and the principal to do that, so that's one question I have. The other thing is just looking at the data. I see, I'm concerned with the, I understand the terminology, the AMM, and I heard earlier in the presentation that prioritized to the campuses doing that, but then now we're about the other campuses. So it's kind of like the Ms. Williams was saying, we have these AMs kids that are up there, we know they're gonna do it. What about these other campuses that are on that border, if you don't give enough attention to them, and wait, I'll get with you next week, because I gotta go out to Best, I gotta go out to Cummings, I gotta go out to Collins and work with them and put them a little off to the side, they're gonna be in the boat next year, you know, if we don't do it. So I don't really, I need to, I'd like to see where that's coming from again, you know, governance-wise. I don't know the details and all that, that's jolly, that's what he's getting paid for, he's paying all of it, but I want, it's overall seeing of that.
So, Ms. Moore?
Sure, sure, please.
So you've asked about Cummings and if they were ready and things like that, and I guess part of the confusion I created was, my focus really was more on third and fourth grade here. So when I said, let's stop adding programs, it was stop adding programs and interventions to those students who are in third and fourth grade, because that's where we're going to make our difference as far as AMM is concerned and our label, right? So is Cummings ready? Absolutely. And then I guess the other thing that I think about is, there's a very trusting relationship. So if it was a problem, I don't have a problem hearing from Ms. Bird that, no, sir, we can't do that. We work together and we work with that, the support that we have, you know, of surrounding us. So I feel.
And I was saying that same, that when they speak about, we have, you know, discussions and everything, and it's very clear that, you know, we hire these DABs, he's not at the forefront, he's not out teaching, he's not out doing this stuff with the teachers and the specialists and forth. We hire him because he has expertise in running a district, and so if he comes to us and says, Rick, they're good, my staff say they're ready, so ready, so we pay him a good salary due to his expertise, and so they'll do that. And so that's why I'm just, you know, in this type of meeting, it's a time for that terminology or that word, because I'm concerned. These communities are gonna come up and go, wait, they're stopping programs, but they're over here starting something new, which may take away from the principal, the APs, the other specialists that are out there, so.
And then I want to say kind of welcome to my world, because I think I've been doing this job for a long time. And during that time, that's always been my struggle, because I want to pay attention to this campus, and, you know, then I walk onto another campus and they say, oh, we haven't seen you for a long time. And that hurts my feelings as well as my level of professionalism. But the one thing I do want to share with you is, it's about the support people that we have here. I know I can't do that job all by myself, and I rely on the information that they share with me, the kinds of conversations that we have regularly when I have questions, when they have questions, I feel it's very open. So you're absolutely right, we give our focus here, and then somebody else comes up and we do have to do, you know, give our focus someplace else. I wish I could say, if we did this, then this would happen, but really for us, it's if A, then B sub 1, B sub 2, B sub 3. That's our greatest joys and our greatest headaches, our people. And so what we have is what we have, and that's what we do our very best with. So I feel very confident in that. And my struggle always is, how do I give the same amount of attention? It's not really about the amount, but it has to be about the quality, and that's where I really, we really have to focus. So I really appreciate that question.
And one final thing, and I always have one of my comments, I like the flip chart with the posters and the things by campus and the students and so forth. I'd almost like to see something like that by campus, so we can kind of compare and see where they're improving and going, and, you know, some sort of little chart, you know.
Remember, we said we weren't adding new programs?
No, I'm trying to, I'm trying to write, so I can overview, see, oh, this is best, and this is where they're going, and removing progress, or maybe, you know, that's sort of, I'm a visual type person, and I may as well can have the numbers, but just give me the words.
Who want our own field people? Who want our own?
I see that.
Ms. Butler, Ms. Butler had a comment.
Um, so I have, oh, a couple of questions. So one, you mentioned the tips and the taps, right, the targeting improvement plan, the turnaround plan for these campuses. So how are we accomplishing those goals? Are we on track with the goals that we set or that were set for those plans? Because everyone there we've seen set focus, our strengths, our weaknesses, are we on track with those things that we put into the plan that we're setting?
Right. So likewise, we take a look at those, what our goals are and how we're achieving them, and they look at quarterly goals and how, what adjustments need to be made based on what data we have. So similarly, if they're looking at, here's where we were, we wanted to achieve this, and we're not on target, we need to back up, we do that. If we need to press forward, we do that. So it is regularly monitored, I would say about monthly, am I right? Pretty close to that. So about monthly, we're looking at that in a large group, but more regularly, we do that on a campus.
And so for those on-campus action plans, right, so can we get that report? I would like to see kind of, you know, obviously meeting those goals every six. I know we talked about the caps, ongoing, we'll hit the dip, and so I know that as a district, we completed one group, so are we looking?
We do. We can get and provide the information on those campuses' quarterly goals and where they are. So there's sort of a little narrative piece that talks about where they were with their quarterly goals, so we do have that, yes. We'll have to figure out how to get all of that, I don't know how large a file will be, but we keep tracking that, so we can get it to you in Thursday's board notes.
I mean, I don't look at the whole report, just kind of like, you know, summary.
Absolutely. We want to provide them what we already have, so we don't. We want to provide you what we already have, so we don't have to review it. Maybe we can cut and pu, cut and paste.
That works for me. And then my other question was about who was doing the monitoring? So are teachers doing more of the monitoring or is it principals? Like who was looking at the stats? So I know you mentioned that everybody. So, so how is that overlooked like on the campus? So, so let's say, for instance, right, they have another administrator. So are, are the teachers spending more time in the classrooms, actually looking at the data and then creating a targeted plan for those students that shows up on the AMM hall? Is that what's happening?
Yes, it is a combination of, of all of those things. So we look at it on a, on a district level. We look at it at the campus level. The teachers are in there meeting with the principals, talking about individual students. The students look at their data. They set goals as well at, at several campuses. So lots of people are on monitoring, a variety once again.
Thank you. Another question.
I just wanted to say thank you for all the data. And I know that it's a lot of hard work. And so, you know, the holiday coming up, enjoy it with your family and get some rest. Because you will need it when you come back.
Is there nothing else to order? Okay. I'm to the point of saying, you guys are really dismissed. Thank you so very much because of this trip. I know that you, I want to finalize the last few things before going for the holiday break. And I, I share the same thing as Dr. Trump. Please enjoy your time off. As an educator, I'm looking forward to my last day as well. And I do plan to take all of my 13, no 12 days. So please do enjoy and thank you so very much for your effort.
Thank you.
Okay, board at this time, what's, here we go. Absolutely. Number 11. Number 11. Consider approval of full day pre-K college at multiple campuses. Okay. Oh my gosh, so I'm losing my entire audience. Enjoy your holiday.
As you'll recall, we met with the board at the November board meeting to start discussing preliminary plans for moving forward with a pilot of a full day pre-K program at certain campuses for next year. So tonight, we're coming back to review that again and ultimately seek your approval to move forward on implementation. So we can get to work if you approve it on the work that needs to be done to get us ready for the next school year. The campuses identified for the full day pilot program have the capacity currently within their building to expand. They're spread throughout the district and those campuses are Petroski, Haiti, Hicks, Bush and Cummings. At these campuses, we would offer a full day pre-K program to all eligible students zone to those campuses in lieu of the current half day program. We also would allow for eligible pre-K students from other nearby campuses if space is available. Parents provide all the transportation for pre-K now and would continue to do so in the full day program. So to review quickly what we have now, we currently at these five campuses are servicing 376 pre-K students with 11 and a half teaching units and eight pre-K instructional aides. Our overall ratio for pre-K is quite low. We, we aim for 11 to one, but with our current enrollment slightly under projected, we are at an average for these campuses of about 9.6. So we're below the 11 to one threshold. And planning for next year, we anticipate an increase in enrollment at these campuses of about 25%. And that's really a rough guess, but it is based on what we've seen at other campuses that have moved from half day to full day. It does make the program more accessible to parents. So we planned for staffing, basically doubling the staff at each campus because those teachers would now have a full classroom for the full day instead of half the kids in the morning and half in the afternoon. That will allow some additional capacity for students from other campuses as well as for growth. So one of the advantages of doing this pilot is to be able to see what happens on a smaller scale at five campuses rather than implementing throughout the district. We anticipate about 500 students would be in the full day program. Each classroom would be staffed with one teacher, one aide and 22 students. In order to accomplish that, we would be adding 11 and a half teachers and 15 additional aides. The cost for implementation is estimated at about 1.2 million. That includes the staffing cost for the additional teachers and instructional aides as well as a full day pre-K instructional coach to support the implementation and help our, our very minimal pre-K staff here at the central office. We would receive for additional students and we are projecting about 130 additional students at these campuses. We would, we would receive half day funding for those students. As you know, the state funds a half day program and the remainder is on us. That half day funding for those additional 130 students would be about 287, reducing the total net cost to about 915,000. This funding would be provided through the federal title programs, title one, two and four. We will not be cutting any current programs and activities in order to fund this next year. Rather, we have a reserve right now of unbudgeted funds resulting from conservative budgeting, especially given the uncertainty about future federal funding. So the funds are available, but we really didn't know they were available in time to fully budget them for this year. So those will roll to next year and be used for the pilot program. We would like to begin as soon as possible if the board gives their approval this evening. So we would begin by meeting with principals in early January to start discussing preliminary plans, identify issues, possible solutions, things we need to work, work through in order to make this happen for next school year. An implementation team will be set up with principals as well as central staff. They'll have semi, semi monthly meetings from January through the beginning of the school year to address all the many things that go into planning for this program. As far as curriculum, schedules, coordinating with the current programs on the campus, planning for staffing, coordinating with daycare facilities as well as on campus extended day opportunities, setting up the enrollment timeline, classroom setups, program marketing. We'll be ready to get the ground running on this in January. So with that, I would like to recommend that the ALLEAF board trustees approve the pilot full day program for the 1920 fiscal year. And then I would also recommend that the board approve at this time the additional staffing units, the teachers, parent professionals and the one instructional coach. Typically, we come to you during the budget process, starting in about April for things we need to know with certainty that we're going to be able to plan on for next year. So these are 1920 staffing units, but we want to know upfront that these units will be available to us and plan for the hiring process. Again, utilizing title funding.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Wynn. So I was kind of, I was going to kind of ask that question as well. What was the, what was the additions or expansions within the program? Or is there any other discussion? Cause I don't think we've been talking about this for almost two months now.
Yeah, I just wanted to have a comment. Well, thanks Dana for your explanation earlier. And so it really did explain how to do those calculations that actually makes sense. I do have a question. It is, once those kids are there at a different zone and they come to almost one of those campuses, where do they go for kindergarten? Do they go back to their-
They would return to their zone campus. We have some of that already with pre-K. If we run out of space at one particular campus for pre-K, the half day program, then those students attend at a different, at a different campus, but then they return to their zone campus where they can have access to transportation and are more nearby.
So if their parent wants their child to stay there, can they do that as well? If they want to stay on that campus?
Um, we haven't discussed that particular issue. I think it would depend on space availability at the campus that they were at. So I think it could be feasible.
Right now, we're not allowed to. Unless there's some extenuating circumstance. And that's one of the issues, I think last month we talked about in terms of implementing this. We're going to have to either come with policy answer or a policy decision or whatever we're currently doing right now. I think in a bigger picture, that question wants to some others. As we start looking at full day pre-K and other types of choice programs and seeing what happens during the session, there may be opportunities for us to change our practices with the changing resources, the changing way we're going to state structure. So that question I would, I'll say no right now, but I don't want to, you know, we may get into this during spring and figure out ways it may work or it may be more feasible than what I'm thinking right now. Does that make sense?
Yes.
I think I would kind of be concerned too. If it was a child that's somewhere for pre-K, maybe allow them to stay there for those other years of elementary. If the goal is to make sure that their learning is not interrupted, you know?
I think for right now, with us starting, not from scratch, but we're starting this fairly good. I would, I would, on complicated matters with a parent with getting into a conversation about whether your child can continue to do it. I know I prefer us at this point in time to continue with the current.
And we also want to be able to provide transportation.
And that always-
With those kind of switches.
Right. And then the other question was about, of all the kids that were going to go and market to try to get that, have we, have we, a lot of like a jumpstart program of like those kids that are already in our district that are taking those classes at three-year-olds because their parents are already committed? Will some of that be, is that any of the discussion that's happened in y'all though?
It's a part of putting a market to, I mean, yes. And then allow that population going to-
I'd almost, I'm commenting on that. I almost, Ms. Wynn's to somehow to this on the gender of somebody versus a discussion, maybe a retreat or something about that, that option for those students. Cause I'm just wondering as a parent or as a community member, you know, those children, you know, going on a full day and then they get pulled away, go to another campus. You know, I know it's another education, they'll be ready, but it's almost like it's over. You know, in a new environment, new, new classmates. If they, it's kind of like, you know, like, I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying, if, if there's a possibility, if there is room to do that. I mean, obviously if there's no space, there's no space, you can't. But if there is a possibility and their, and their family's willing to, in my opinion, to do that transportation for kindergarten, maybe first, you know? However, if there's a possibility to work, it's not going to lie, I believe it may lie.
No, I, I, you know, I want to make sure I'm making sense. I completely agree with you. I mean, there's no one who's talked about continuing to go in Texas more than I. So I totally agree with you. I guess just on the 2018, I'm not ready to say one way or the other to this Butler's question. I, but I, yeah, if I had any, we have any say in it, we have any flexibility in it, we can figure out a way to do it that makes sense, then I would totally agree with you.
Well, I'm going to say in the wording in the, in the program, if we could do something to do that. So, you know, you know, you're kind of like, oh, you don't even think about that. You forgot about that part, you know, or something.
I think it's an item that's worth investigating because if you, if you put it out there and give false hopes, then that's going to be a problem. You know, so I think it's something that we need to, now that it's been raised to discuss more.
We've talked about it in general, but we haven't, yeah, it's been 10 thousand, but we, we haven't-
And we don't know how much demand there would be for that.
Yeah, we, this is as much research as it is for, you know, trying to do it.
I didn't know if parents really wanted to go to that campus, they would, and if they have to be living in an apartment or, you know, a rental or leasing type of status, then they would probably move to stay in that school to meet those kids. I don't, I mean, I don't want to do that. So it's some meaning. You know, if they get stuck with, you know, campuses, I know when my kids went to Chancellor, that was years ago, thinking of getting rid of a, on the regular, moving over to another part. And the whole community, you know, this was probably on board a couple of years before it got, you know, real upset, you know? And vocal about it.
But this could be part of a larger conversation.
I think we discussed, we discussed the last two, Ms. Warren. We were remembering some other situations. Cause there's a lot of possibilities, for instance, siblings. You know, if I decide to take my kid over here for full day pre-K, but his brother goes to homeschool, then I'm going to bring him back. But his brother, can he go over to the full day pre-K school to join him? So that, you know, which direction and how much is, is available? We have to make those decisions before we, before we allow the first one. But, but I agree, I think we- I'm just saying if space is available and there's a lot of required transportation, then I mean, it's, it's- So what is this to be of this?
Supposed to be a discussion with John and Lauren.
I just want to add my thing. All my life, I moved to school, to school, to school, to school. And honestly, keeping pre-K for years old doesn't make any difference. When they go to high school, they go to school. When they get to middle school, high school, that's where they want to stick with. But all my four years high school, I went to all different high schools, it doesn't matter. So life a lot.
There's some, there's some management tools.
One of the, one of the, just real quick, and this is probably down the road. Because I think that you, the team is real creative in, in figuring out how we want to do this pilot. So, I mean, that, that's wonderful. And the fact that we are, we're using, you know, unbudgeted, unbudgeted federal funds. We don't know what the legislature is going to do this, this next session. And so just later on down the road, maybe thinking how we want to sustain this, this model. Cause we know it's going to be successful. That's what research says. And so how are we going to sustain it or even expand it to all of our other campuses? If we're not getting the support from, from this, I know it's high, it's high on the conversation, but you just never know how that's going to turn out. So everybody should go and demand your loss and tell them we need this. That's what we will be saying.
One, one last thought on that. Any thought, we have a discussion with parents that have children in, you know, special education or needs and they have, you know, live in those areas and they want to do a full day pre-K. I don't know, I mean, I could talk to you, you know, special ed kids, everything for- That would be affected by this?
Well, if we have students like in our PPCD program at this time for this pilot, we are not going to extend that to full day. So we're not considering that at this time. So, yeah. But if they are a child that may be, you know, potentially, well, if it's PPCD, they're in there for speech as well. Correct. Both.
Yeah, so if a student is participating in a regular pre-K program, then they would have the opportunity to. So we happen to have the discussion, I haven't been a part of that on the PPCD program. Right now, we're keeping that the half day program. What we need to prepare ourselves for, cause I've lived this, is for parents to revoke consent for special ed so they can actually-
Exactly.
So that's something we need to prepare ourselves for.
Yes, and so we are starting conversations with the core team along with the principals that are going to be where the campuses, the full day pre-K will be. We're starting our first meeting now that we approved it. I think we've got our first date set for January 9th or so. So we have some tentative dates just in case.
Yeah, I just had a, a discussion on-
Yeah, we're still, you know, we are definitely listening and considering all things that may come up.
Okay, board, let me say that I've enjoyed this conversation. I really have, but we've been conversating this if it is going to be approved by the board. And it has not been approved, so.
I'll go after this slide. And we will keep the board posted, of course, as we work through this going forward.
All right, at this time, it is recommended that the ALLEAF board trustees approve the pilot full day pre-K program for the 2019, 20 fiscal year at the selected school sites. And I know Ms. Wynn, she's already read, I'll just read again before I ask for approval. It is also recommended that the board approve additional staffing units. So please be aware when this, the vote comes that you are also considering staffing units for the 2019, 2020 school year for the pilot implementation. 11.5 teachers, 15 parent professionals, one instructional coach utilizing federal type fund. So I entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved by Ms. Keith, may have second. It's been seconded by Dr. Trump, all in favor of the full day pre-K pilot. The record shows seven now. Thank you, Ms. Wynn.
Some people are very excited about this.
And Ms. Keith, Ms. Keith would like to add- And Ms. Key, Ms. Key would like to add a comment.
This is an important decision that we've made to implement a full-day pre-K at these selected sites. And so I took the liberty of preparing a letter from the Board, but wanted to wait until after the vote to do it. And I think Ms. Battle has a copy of the letter. And it's a letter of support from the Board to the task force and to the pre-K department stating that we're willing to support you both in the monetary, which is our responsibility to vote for, but also for the legislator and have them step up and do what they need to do to fund full-day pre-K. So I'm asking all the Board members to sign this letter tonight so that it can be presented to the task force tomorrow morning when they need. And it's as much a reminder or a thank you to that group for all the hard work that's coming up as it is a reminder to the Board is that we've made a promise of voting to do this to support them.
Thank you, Ms. Key, and the most important piece of that is, we know that we've taken action. We understand that the funding that we have available to us and what we're doing. But the most important piece that she just mentioned was, it's not just about the money. It's about putting your action behind it, and that action is pleading before your legislators and communicating with those people who are going to be participating in this program. You know, making very, very clear, we, we aren't taking a risk, but it's a, it's a great investment. That's the way we see it. What happens if that funding is not there, then that means that we're gonna have to, as you said, we're committed, we're gonna have to step up and figure out ways. But I know Ms. Swinney's already on the floor, so thanks so very much. All right.
Thank you, and, Board.
Be sure, don't leave before Ms. Battle gets with you and signs, please.
She's up there in the office.
Thank you. All right, so now we're down to item number twelve. Item number twelve, I know that we do not have anything to report out for the evaluation, but I do want to talk about in a way, we didn't meet for a superintendent or Board evaluation, but I want to talk about it real quick, Board. I could take an opportunity, the Board did do its team building, so that with all of those things, we are trying to ensure that we are on, on board and on track with following through with our training processes and understanding, making some adjustments to our operating procedures, making us a more fit of Board, so to speak. So I want to say I appreciate every Board member who came out and participated in that. And please, even though the holiday is coming and most people think that, you know, school is closed and we're not working, workings are still working, so make sure you're reading your materials that come along the way so that we can be prepared and ready to hit the ground in January. Ms. Bro, do you have a report regarding legislative policy? You want to talk about the legislative meeting and upcoming information on equity policy?
Yes, prior to that, our last Board meeting, we did have a committee meeting and we lined out some items that we needed our Board Council to review. So we're still in the process of looking at that and finalizing all of that. So once that is done, then that will be shared out with, and it was just updating our Board operating policy and our, that handbook. And so, once, once that is finalized, we will bring that to the Board for, for the update. And in regards to the equity policy, things that we said that we, the last mention of it, that we were gonna move forward with having an equity audit done and bringing someone in to look at that. So we are in contact with Dr. Roger Cleveland, I believe, yeah, Dr. Roger Cleveland, and getting information from him in regards to presenting to the Board to make that happen.
And, Board, so, as we're.
Who would like to, who would like to share their, yes, you, you want to start, Ms. Russell, to, to share over the legislative? Just talk about your, just talk about your experience. This was your first time attending the legislative breakfast, so go ahead and share.
Yes, yes, thank you. So, yes, I, we, actually, one of the things that we had, that we were very excited about was that all of the Board members attended the legislative breakfast, which occurred last Friday, Friday morning. And basically, what, it was my first time attending and I thought it was very insightful, very valuable. We shared what our, what our committee had worked on in regards to what is our, what are our priorities for this upcoming legislative session. And we did have some special guests that came and, off the top of my head, you know, yeah. So we had, we had some special guests that actually also came and gave their input from ACC and City Council and things, Senate and the House, thank you. And they came and heard what our priorities are, were, and actually shared with us what they would like to see from us in regards to this upcoming legislative session. So it, it really benefited me, I thought it was a good, good use of our, our time.
So, kind of, yeah, Ms. Warren.
It was actually, forgive me, we had two senators, one Democrat, one Republican. And the Democratic, the Senator was like, it's gonna be a good session, it's gonna be, we're gonna do some good work, it's gonna be some good, some good discussion, but you need to worry about the, the other side of the aisle and focus on that. And the Republican Senator wasn't here, but his, I guess her right-hand man was there, her assistant, was able to discuss it. It was actually some real good discussion, so it looks like there's some good things that can come around for education, Republican.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of take liberty and ask Ms. Butler to kind of share some of her insight as well because I sit next to you and you've taken lots of notes. And for the record, it was, the individuals who attended were people who support, who are representative of this particular community. So we did have Senator, he'll have, if I call him Senator West. Senator, Senator Miles was, was here as well as Jeanne Boo was here. Board Chair for whose community college we're not unfamiliar with, Walkin' to Catholic as well, so. The part that, go ahead, Ms. Butler.
And so it was a great meeting for me. I got to actually hear from all the different voices that were at the table. So one of the things that stuck out to me was, it was constantly being reminded about funding, property taxes, over the minimum rates and pre-K's funding and how we're going to actually push the agenda. So I found that very useful as, as it's in our legislative priorities as a district, and that's in the state board of education's priorities, it's in the Senator's ones, it's in, it's all levels. This is not a topic that's just out there for discussion, people are ready to fight for. So that really mattered to me. And one of the good things that stuck up to me was the fact that we had everybody at the table. So it was all different levels of government that were there, so it wasn't like we only heard from just one perspective. So one of the things that I saw was that there was consensus across the table, across the aisle. So when Boris Miles was talking and the other person who was very Republican, their staffer was talking, we still had the same vision of funding full-day pre-K. We still had the same vision of increasing the state funding for public schools. So that really stuck out to me.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Key. I did remind the people present that in the last, in the mid-year or midterm elections, that teachers proved that when they get out to vote, they can make a difference. And Senator Miles assured me that there were several people in Austin who felt a pinch from that, that they were well aware of what the teachers want as a group and know that that's a powerful group when they go out to vote. And he said, when they discuss things, and ALEF comes up, he said, every Senator and Congressman in Texas knows that ALEF is going to speak up about things that matter to students and schools.
One of the other things that we didn't mention was, that came up, that was critically important, was funding for mental health. And what they mentioned was advocating for adequate funding to have individuals who truly address mental health and not just dumping on the school counselors, to actually have people in the schools that are trained. And that funding needs to be flexible so that it can be used in different ways at different campuses within different districts. So that also was one of the priorities that, that was, was discussed.
Again, I will just top it off by saying, safety was still also another, well, when we talk about safety, it went into the different areas of mental health. That was one other item, but I didn't have it noted. What I'd like to say, have we posted our agenda on the site for individuals? So, and the reason why it's important to announce that, because there are individuals that I work with that I see in the audience that we always talk our line. Our legislative part is to see where we can go and fight together, so I'm looking forward to that as well. All right, Board, I need to make an adjustment here, and it wasn't an item that we voted on, but earlier when I was calling out the Board hours, I was looking for a paper that I just found. And the only reason why I'm reading this, it's just a matter of record because I've already stated that all Boards met the requirements, but want to make you aware, especially because we have new Board members here and this is always training for you guys as you become, moving to your roles as well. In accordance with Board policy, the legal training and orientation the Board presidential announced annually at the last meeting of the calendar year, the name of each member who has completed, exceeded, or has deficient, and/or is deficient in the required hours of continuing education. All City members are required to complete five hours of continuing education, and all newly elected are required to complete ten hours of continuing education. All are required to complete SB 1566. All new members are required to complete orientation to the Texas Education Code as well as Open Meetings Act, Public Information Act, and are required a team building session of at least three hours. And I did read all the details, wanted to make sure that everyone know that all our Board, all of our new Board members did complete three hours for the orientation. All members completed the local orientation hours. We mentioned that we just had the team building meeting. All of our new Board members completed that Open Meetings Act. All members and new members completed the Public Information Act. And we talked about, they only needed five hours continuing education, as I stated, from the lowest of the least amount, Board members exceeded twenty-nine hours and the maximum was fifty-four hours. So, thank you, Board, I just wanted to make sure that that was added to the record. At this time, everyone, we're moving to the item on the agenda in which the Board will consider and discuss recommendation of an independent hearing officer and conduct a hearing pursuant of the policy. Mr. Woods?
Yes, Board. Can we take a fifteen-minute break so we can reconfigure the room a little bit?
All right. So at this time. Okay, at this time, we're gonna go into close, section, section 551 dot zero dot zero seven one. It's the one that I'm gonna go with at this time. So at this time, at eight-thirty, we're gonna go into executive session. We're gonna take, we're gonna go into executive session first, gonna give them an opportunity to do that. And yes, according to the item, this is on the agenda, it is in here. So, yes, it's gonna be heard, we do need to go ahead and send it out so that you can have a better opportunity to spread, put everything on the table that you need, okay? Right.
Looking forward to the next week, but you've got a long drive. Yeah, I'm tired as hell.
Well, the time of the whole year.
So what about next week, what's weather like?
No snow, dry. We've driven before to the Wizzards where we've had the trip to Kentucky South.
Oh, yeah.
We've driven, we can ice cream, so pair of words, like it's not safe there, really.
No, I enjoy your tribe up there, I think so.
So I'm not, we, we.
We used to live in Chicago.
Where you at? I'm in Chicago. Yeah, in person, through a panel, just like you. Okay.
Took my wife up there to experience.
Oh, really?
We were twenty miles an hour in the drifts. So she said, she was prepared, she had brought prepared.
And of course, the ice first, and then it's another hot summer. How's that? When she walks on the ice.
Where'd you go?
Go back. I walked, we go, this time, Philadelphia. Detroit. And wait a minute. Right outside of Philadelphia, called Pottstown, a four day camp.
Wow.
Half million dollars.
You know what? We're gonna make some budget changes in the house.
About to witness the shimsheen.
Your question.
That's like one.
Mine is. From nine, nine, nine to the data. It's still for the shimsheen.
Major Sun's done two years of broadcasting stuff.
Major's audition for the reason of you, I have reasons.
Is it interesting acting or broadcasting?
Acting. Still a lot of groundwork, isn't it? That's amazing. One. But he's the one for the discussions.
So convenient for the same candidate basketball.
Cowboys fan?
Absolutely. Welcome to Kansas. When I was younger, it was the only team that had, uh, Ray started, Jesse. We're in New... He's a champion. And in the Chiefs, I like Christian Koya. Nigerian night, or something like that.
I'm a Lions fan, and he just almost gives to mediocre every year.
I was a very sangist fan, man. It was a big race. It hurt my heart when he retired. But I understood sometimes, I like, you know, the G trophy and destiny. You don't want to allow him.
See, how did I?
With no line.
We put you on the bottom of the list, couldn't have hosted right.
Yeah. And everybody, all their own, they're prepared. So nothing, nothing you need to do is in the nation often it's a lose. Right. Oh, man.
That was me, young, I watched how I saw Magic. I was like, oh, God.
Penny Hardaway. Jason Williams too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, he was sick.
The little pass he take, the elbow it.
Yep. That was nice. I don't know, I only keep up. That's why I was turning on the play off teaching. That's a long fifteen minutes. Yeah, I said fifteen months, seven, but a lot like that. About to see how you really, where all the people coming back home. Shimsheen. Deidre Jeffs? I seen the sun, I never looked that close to my nose.
You could add him to the list of quarterbacks that you may have missed on.
And always, always in NFL, would you throw apparently the celebrations when a guy has broken a record, the guy in white clothes comes to get the ball, take the ball there, yet they celebrated too much. Really? Actually, we were viewed by the people in New York where the challenge was, yeah, I'm further removed, it's not excessive.
Oh, yeah, the picture of those. And they're all beat. And they all don't seem to try to search down. And this is the fourth one.
They all try out. God, it's not even, it's just here again.
I think about how hard it feels.
Catching up to ten eight, about twenty years. Twenty years. Don't like. Patty Philperty, so I didn't know any much, stood up in lack. Like the Michael Cohen. Just do whatever, love to tell them to do. Just do whatever, love to tell them to do. Sweet time, let's start. It's the longest fifteen minutes in my life. Time to tell the lunch party.
I can show that the board has come back into a session, un closed session at nine eleven. So at this time, we are at, what is considered to discuss a recommendation of an independent hearing officer and conduct a hearing pursuant to our policies. So today is December the eighteenth and the time is now nine eleven. We're in the state of Texas. This meeting of the Board of Trustees is now called to order for the purpose stated in the duly posted meeting notice. Board members present are Mr. John Nguyen, Mr. Rick Moreno, Ms. Darlene Brown, myself, Anne Williams, Ms. Jennifer Keaton, and Dr. Lily Chong. Purpose of this meeting is to consider recommendations of the certified hearing examiner in the matter of Mr. Robert Green, teacher, Miller Intermediate School. For the record, Mr. Green is representing himself and is present. Mr. Eric Nichols is representing administration. Dr. Elizabeth Powell is presented. And the board has for representation, Mr. Paul Lamb to advise the board. Mr. Green, am I clear that you have requested that this be an open session? Thank you. Then we will proceed in open session as you requested. In order to provide the most accurate record possible of this hearing, a recording of the procedures is being made and the court reporter is present. Thank you. Please avoid talking when others are speaking so that the recordings will be accurately reflect the proceedings. I'd like to ask that all those present, please silence your cell phones before we begin and before we proceed to the meeting. So during the course of this hearing, the board may go into closed session and consult the attorney under the terms of Texas Government Code, section five five dot one zero seven one. If the board member wishes to seek the advice of counsel, please make this request known. Unless anyone have any objection, I ask that the court reporter to incorporate the procedural background of the matter and set out in the script the procedural, procedures to be followed and proceed directly to the issues of determination. Mr. Green, I want to make sure that you have a copy of those procedural documents that we're talking about. Does anyone have any objections to the items and for the procedure? Procedure to be followed and proceed directly to the issue of determination. Is there any objections at this time? I'd like to ask at this time, is there any trustee whether, I'd like to ask whether there's anyone here who's able to render a fair and impartial judgment regarding this matter based solely on the material provided for review and the argument and discussions presented. Is there any board member who isn't capable of filling that role? And as we've done in the past, it's been a while, the board, especially since mostly you are new to this process. Let me ask name by name, Mr. Nguyen, are you able to render a fair and impartial judgment regarding the matter based upon? Mr. Moreno.
Yes, I can.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Records show that I am, Ms. Aquia, are you able to render a fair and impartial judgment regarding this matter?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Chong, are you able to render fair and impartial judgment regarding the matter based upon?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Let the records show that all board members are. And I am so as well. I thought I made that clear, but if you guys did not get that, I am also able to render a fair and impartial judgment regarding the matter based solely on the material provided. So the issue for the board consideration is whether to accept, reject, or change the certified hearing examiner's findings of facts, conclusion of law, and propose based on a review of the records. We may reject or change a finding of fact if after reviewing the records of the proceeding before the hearing examiner. We find it, if we find it not supported by substantial evidence. It would reject the certified hearing examiner recommendations or make any changes. We must state the reason and legal basis in writing. Board, I'd like to say once again, if there are any concerns that you may have that you believe that we need to go into executive session, please do not hesitate to let us know. All right, and Mr. Nichols, you will proceed first. You will be allowed to make a maximum thirty minutes presentation to the board, followed by a maximum of thirty minutes presentation by Mr. Green. So, Mr. Nichols, you may make your presentation to the board based upon the transcript.
Thank you, presentable. May I do it from the microphone? I think I've had that request of the, with the certified examiners request to do that. Thank you. Good evening. I wanted to go into a little bit of background before we actually get to the needs of this particular matter. As many of you know that have been on the board for a while, the process as far as this is in multiple parts. But for those of you who are new to the board or haven't heard this in a while, I wanted to go into background of what this is. Under chapter twenty-one, the contract such as that was set by Mr. Green, there are multiple parts into a termination hearing. This is the last part of the termination hearing. As you probably recall, in back in July of this year, there was a proposal that was made by the administration to the board. The board voted on that proposal and then that proposal was incorporated into a letter that was sent to Mr. Green with multiple reasons for his proposal for termination. After he received that, Mr. Green did appeal to TEA. TEA assigned what's an independent hearing examiner. And that independent hearing examiner, on November the twelfth, much later than, at the very, very end of the process, with the court reporter that we have over here today actually being in attendance as well, heard an evidentiary hearing on the proposal and the reasons behind it as to the administration's recommendations to terminate Mr. Green. The hearing officer subsequently rendered the decision on November twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, sustaining the administration's request to terminate Mr. Green under multiple counts. And that is the recommendation that's part of the packet that y'all received. This is the first meeting that we could adequately get those materials together. And so we're within the statutory guidelines as far as that. So tonight, as I think has probably been explained to me by your learning counsel, this is really to talk about why the administration believes you should accept the recommendation of the certified hearing examiner. Well, I would like to actually put it this way first, and I appreciate Dr. Elizabeth Phillips Powell being here with me tonight. She actually testified in the hearing, you should probably see it from the transcript as well. And we do believe in all capacity, as far as from the behalf of the administration, that the hearing officer in actually rendering her decision not only had substantial evidence on every point that she rendered on behalf of the administration, but they're actually sustained by more than substantial evidence. Many of the evidentiary points are uncontroverted. So we actually have as far as the law is, we're beyond the substantial evidence, we're beyond proponents of the evidence. We have uncontroverted evidence. And what I mean by that essentially is this, Mr. Green put nothing into the record that would actually controvert the evidence that administration actually presented. Much of the evidence that's actually presented to go against Mr. Green's case, in other words, for the administration's case, was Mr. Green's own writings, was Mr. Green's own statements, was things that Mr. Green actually did. So as you know, this is a term contract, Mr. Green's term contract is actually in the record. As part of that, we had to bring this process forward. Well, as part of what the hearing officer actually did, the hearing officer rendered a very concise recommendation. That recommendation is part of the nine pages that's in your packet. And I would like to actually look at that particular piece right now and we'll talk about petitioner. Petitioner as Alef ISD, the administration has good cause to terminate respondent's term contract per se to section three point three of his contract, which we'll look at in a minute, and the Texas Education Code, section twenty-one point two one one. Therefore, the hearing officer who conducted the hearing recommends that the Alef Board of Trustees accept and adopt binding facts and conclusions of law, which would then subsequently terminate Mr. Green. And I believe you have a variety of motions that actually would substantiate that and would actually affectionate what the administration is actioning. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to go into a little more detail as far as some of these points, because I think they're important to look at from that procedural aspect of it. And I won't go into a great amount of detail. But Mr. Green was actually proposed for a variety of things as far as his termination. Now, the reason this all came about is because Mr. Green had an incident involving a student in May, May tenth of two thousand eighteen. Subsequent to that, he was actually placed on administrative leave. Once that occurred, and because Mr. Green had a previous incident that had also been investigated by the administration, Dr. Phillips Powell was concerned that this was like a pattern. And so I think the, what she testified to in the transcript was she wanted to look at more detail. Well, nowadays with the aspect of the internet and everything else, we have the ability to look at things. And once she plunged in that information out there, we found a plethora of information regarding Mr. Green, including the fact that Mr. Green had actually initiated two lawsuits against previous districts and it actually been non-renewed and or terminated from said districts, as well as suspended with and without pay. Well, then we went to Mr. Green's application. And Mr. Green's application is actually in the materials that you actually have. And you will see in that that Mr. Green falsified his application because Mr. Green did not indicate to Alef ISD that he actually was suspended, that he actually had been terminated, that he had been non-renewed. None of those things were put on there. Those are material misrepresentations, ladies and gentlemen. And the hearing officer later found that that's what we actually had, was material representations. And the reason they're material is because Alef ISD administration would not have hired Mr. Green for those positions if he had been truthful on his application. In addition to that, it's also a breach of Mr. Green's contract. Mr. Green's contract actually has in section three point three that he is supposed to adhere to board policies, that he's actually supposed to adhere to the materials that actually are found there. And if he violates those, that is a violation of his contract itself. The hearing officer also found that Mr. Green had violated section three point three of his contract and that also was good cause to terminate this contract. The hearing officer likewise found that because of his conduct, that Mr. Green actually had violated board policies, including DH ethics. Those of you who've been around education for a long time know that that's a very powerful policy out there that a lot of entities in public that actually have. Mr. Green was found to have violated that policy as well. So on those three grounds, ladies and gentlemen, the board, we are actually asking from the behalf of the administration to accept the hearing officer's recommendations. Each of those points. Each of those points were actually substantiated as far as not only substantial evidence, not only preponderance of the evidence, but in many cases, like I said, uncontroverted evidence from Mr. Green's own writings. Those materials are actually in the record. Those materials are actually part of the record. Now, it was interesting in the, in the hearing itself, Mr. Green was actually asked, because he'd been asked multiple times, why did he not complete his application accurately? Why did he misrepresent those things? Mr. Green's response after the hearing officer told him he had answered yes or no that he did, and he did eventually indicate that he had not answered accurately, is because he had lawsuits out there, and he thought that those lawsuits, that he did not have to answer those questions accurately. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, there's nothing in that application that says, if you may have sued your previous employer, that you do not have to answer accurately your application as far as those things. It doesn't say anything about if you sued somebody else, then you don't have to answer this. Likewise, it does not say you can't answer questions from somebody. He didn't do it. He didn't ever do it. And actually, his response upon asking that was, well, the ALEF ISD Administration should have done a better job of investigating my application before they hired me. In other words, it was the Administration's fault because they didn't investigate his falsities on his application. Ladies and gentlemen of the Board, that is not the appropriate standard. That's the reason it asks. It certifies that the information that you're putting in your application is true and correct. So the hearing officer found very clearly that Mr. Green, even though he said he did do it intentionally, even though it actually appears that he did under multiple counts, falsified his application. Because he falsified his application in a material manner, that is good cause to terminate his contract. And that's what the Administration is asking the Board to ratify, the hearing officer's recommendations in that manner. So, as you all know, the hearing officer spent basically an entire day going through the evidence. Then the hearing officer actually renders a decision after that, where she goes through all of the evidence once again. And in rendering that decision, she found multiple points of good cause. So, as many of you know, the Board determines what good cause is. But there are constraints beyond that. And so as we look at Chapter 21.211 of the Education Code, it talks about Board trustees may terminate a contract and discharge its charter at any time for good cause as determined by the Board. This, ladies and gentlemen, has been determined by a hearing officer on multiple accounts to be good cause. So we would ask the Board at this time to adopt the hearing officer's recommendations, to accept the hearing officer's finding of facts and conclusions of law, and terminate Mr. Green's term contract with ALEF ISD. I would like to reserve the remaining time that I have for our level. How much time is that, Mr. Nguyen?
It is twenty minutes and thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, you may make a presentation to the Board based upon the transcript. We still have thirty minutes.
Definitely, Board members. First of all, that indicated, as you notice, that I'm pro se represented tonight. As your ALEF Independent School District Attorney indicated that the reputation of the hearing examiner was that they would have good cause to terminate my contract, which my belief is they do not have good cause to terminate my contract. As he stated that during the application process when I filled it out, there were no lawsuits that was pending. The lawsuit had been found. I was under the impression that I had got information from a representative attorney, and I asked them, what should I put on my application? Because I was under the impression that I was under a gag order not to discuss my previous lawsuits. Those lawsuits was definitely indicated that those school districts had unlawfully terminated me. Those two lawsuits from Bradsport Independent School District determined that they had retaliated against me. That is the reason why they went into, I survived summary judgment and won. Houston Independent School District, I was a teacher under probationary contract. They was ordered by the Court to go into settlement because of their unlawful non-renewal, which that was settled out of court. So, never did I, even in the hearing examiner, in her, in her letter that she wrote, she indicated that Mr. Green never intentionally meant to misrepresent on his application because I was under the impression that I was under a protected activity, which allowed me to answer what I answered. Now, as their counselor indicated that Dr. Powell just all of a sudden would go and do a research on my background. I was hired July the fourteenth. They had my personnel file. Counsel brought up some information about my file in the hearing, that there was some information there that I had been proposed for termination, which was untrue. I voluntarily resigned from ALEF Independent School District and went on to another school district to teach and coach. My thing is, why would the district, why would the district wait five years to come back and look at my personnel file and determine that I was misrepresented on my application? I have five excellent years of teaching. Student achievement exceptional. Never been written up by my administrators, never. So, what would prompt them to go into, because of an incident that happened May the 10th, 2018, that was never, never been proven? I have not yet received an outcome of that investigation from Dr. Powell. So technically, I'm still on administrative leave with pay. So, I'm asking the Board, why is it that Dr. Powell has not given an outcome of her investigation of an alleged incident that occurred May the 10th, 2018? And concerning that incident of January, 2016, the hearing officer found that was inconclusive, that the information that they provided proved it was factual that I was exonerated from that incident due to the fact that it did not occur. Why was it that the May 10th incident, that the parent, they sent a letter home to the parent, a nurse, but the parent never came to complain about the incident? Why? Because the incident never occurred. There was no malice or harm, that I harmed a student, because I'm not that type of teacher. I've been teaching for five years in ALEF Independent School District. And there's nothing, nothing out of those five years that indicate that I'm the type of person that would misrepresent myself. There's nothing in there to indicate my inability to be effective with students. Nothing. I've always been effective. If you look back in my history, if you look at, look back at my test scores, you can see the achievement that I've made with the students. Students that have been very, very difficult with other teachers, but with my ability, I'm able to to gain a natural sensibility with students that's very difficult. I'm just not saying that, that I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm not perfect. But, I'm just saying is, why would Dr. Powell, after five years, go back and do a scan on the, on the computer and pull up information when it already was there? If she needed information, she should have looked at the two thousand, I was employed 1989 to 2000. He indicated there was something in my file. Why would that use to propose termination? No. They knew. They knew after they did their research that I had engaged in protective activity. They utilized that information against me in order to propose my termination by law. I am entitled to protect my rights. And it's indicated that if I had indicated that I was in protective activity by law, ALEF Independent School District could not discriminate against me because I, because I engaged in protective activity. But, in that letter from the superintendent, it indicated if I had truly or responded differently on my application, that the outcome would have been differently, that they would not have hired me. So what they're saying is, because I went into a protective activity, they would not have hired me. But, the law says that you cannot discriminate against me if I went into a protective activity. ALEF stated in the letter that they would not have hired me even if they would have known that I went into a protective activity. Now, as it goes along, the May the, the May the 10th, 2018 incident, I was called back by Dr. Powell to the Human Resource while on administrative leave. I was called back to return back to work without even giving a complete outcome of her investigation. When I returned back to work, I was demeaned, humiliated, treated as a second-class citizen. I was sent to transportation to put gas in buses. I'm a highly educated young man. I don't deem that was appropriate to send me to a bus bourn to fill up buses with gasoline. And to make matters worse, they not, did it, did not even provide any training. So, therefore, they sent me back to the Administration Building. When I went back to the Administration Building, I was ordered by Dr. Powell to shred papers. Now, I only shredded papers, but I had to shred papers for eight hours with no break. I find that very humiliating, demeaning, and pretty much it caused anxiety. It caused problems with me sleeping. It really humiliated, it really caused so much humiliation that I could not even come back to work. Because I said, who treats, who treats a human being this way? What have I, what did I do in order to be treated in this fashion? No, I didn't misrepresent myself on my application. I would never misrepresent myself. If you notice on that application, there's names on there that I used that I would not dare put them in a position where I, to misrepresent myself on my application. Like I stated, since I was in a protective activity, which I won two lawsuits against previous districts, the district chose to, after five years later, to come back and propose a termination. Why? Because of misrepresentation. Second, because of two incidents that were proven to be inconclusive. In other words, the evidence did not prove itself in order to keep me out of the classroom. I returned back to the classroom except for May the 10th, 2018. And I'm still puzzled, why haven't I returned back to the classroom at this stage? Why haven't there been a conclusion of the investigation? Why haven't I received the outcome of the investigation? Matter of fact, I'm wondering if you already received the outcome of the investigation? Because I know district policy, Board policy say, I'm entitled to hear, to have an outcome of the investigation. And to this point, Mr. Green had not received an outcome of the investigation. I believe, I strongly believe that this was only a ploy by the superintendent to disguise unlawful retaliation against me because I went into protective activity. This was the only reason why we're here tonight. Is the fact that this is personal. This isn't about the way I teach, my performance. I'm an outstanding teacher. I know. Because I developed my craft. My craft and my students meant the most to me. I'm an outstanding teacher. If you go and take a survey with my students, they'll tell you about my teaching style, the way I believe in students, how I encourage students, how I motivate students. But they, but sometimes you don't take, take a look at the other things that I provide in the community. They don't state how Mr. Green took an unprivileged kids, cut their hair when their parents didn't pay for it. I get that. They don't say about Mr. Green that he went and purchased clothes for unprivileged kids. They don't say that thing about Mr. Green. They don't, they don't acknowledge that. I would never misrepresent myself because my parents taught me better than that. Why would I lie? I don't have to lie about anything. Definitely not lying about a child. Why would I want to harm a student? I have kids of my own that also attended ALEF Independent School District. So, why would I want to harm anyone? I'm not that type of person. Never have and never will. It's the bottom line to this case that we're here. Superintendent Dr. Powell, she quote, just ran up on him, surveyed the computer, and found information about me. So right then and there, that lets me know that they knew I was in protective activity. So, therefore, they took it on themselves to say, oh, this is a good time to look into his application. Five years. You wait five years to look into my application. I find that kind of strange, and I kind of find it, it's like a witch hunt to me. Because now, since you found out that I was in, I engaged in protective activity, now you're going to come after me. So, you came after me with an incident that had not been substantiated, that not been proven, like I said. I have not yet received an outcome of the investigation. I have not known if I'm, have I been innocent or guilty? The hearing examiner even called it alleged incident at this point because they did not produce any documentation of the outcome of the investigation. The hearing officer even stated that Mr. Green did not intentionally misrepresent on his application. The hearing officer also mentioned that Mr. Green, that it was inconclusive of the January 2016 incident. The hearing officer also stated in her report that Mr. Green did not mishandle the situation, that I was protected by law. The hearing examiner, yes, she did say that I, not being, just because of intentionally, there was still grounds for termination. Yes. But, I'm here to, tonight, Board members, to tell you that never would I misrepresent myself on my application. Never did any of the incident prove that I had done anything wrong. Counsel, in the hearing, never produced any, any documentation or evidence that proved that I had done anything wrong in those two incidents. What the counsel did, what the counsel did produce was an indication that clearly stated that Mr. Green engaged in protective activity with Bradsport Independent School District, with Houston Independent School District, which brought on to this August the first, 2018, letter from the superintendent of proposal of termination. If not, I would be in my classroom doing what I'm supposed to do. What I do best, that's teaching, that's engaging students. That's what it's all about. It's not about the Administration. It's not about the superintendent. It's not about the Board. It's not about me. It's about how the students learn, how they achieve. That's what Mr. Green is about. That's how Mr. Green is able to produce. That's why I'm asking the Board to not to affirm the hearing officer's determination. Because of a fact. I'm here to let the Board know that I'm not a liar. And that's what they portrayed me as, a liar. I'm not a liar. Never have been a liar. And would not lie on a legal application if I would have known. I was under the impression that I was engaged in a protective activity, which had a gag order, which I was under a gag order, to not to report. Thank you for your attention, and my prayer is that the Board does not affirm the hearing officer's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Nichols, do you, you wish to make a rebuttal statement? And I was just trying to check the time. And I was just trying to check the time again. I thought it was 20 minutes and 30 seconds.
I will, if I may, go into a couple of things that Mr. Green talked about. I think the first thing I'd like to say is this is an unfortunate case of disanctioned, prepared in the first place. That multiple times, which was tried to attempt to be worked on by Mr. Green and resolved by Mr. Green, but unfortunately to no avail. But this actually matter is important. The May 10th issue that Mr. Green said that the hearing officer found was inconclusive, it's not what the hearing officer said. The recommendation is very, very clear on that. What the hearing officer said was that she was not sure whether or not a particular statute called 22.0512, which is a defenseability standpoint, was applicable in the case. What the evidence was, though unfortunately, is not only was there a video of the outside of Mr. Green's classroom during the time period of this May 10th incident, but also we had testimony of an individual named Mr. Holmes, who was at that particular school, that entered into the classroom as another individual was pulling Mr. Green off of a student in the class. As Mr. Holmes then removed the student from the class, Mr. Green was removed by the class, by another teacher. That's why Mr. Green was put on administrative leave, that's why they triggered an investigation and additional things from Dr. Powell. Now, the problem with that is when we start looking at this, Mr. Green talks about this protective activity. He was not under any protective activity with ALI by his team. He may have been under protective activities with other school districts, but he wasn't under any kind of protected activity when he was proposed for termination with ALI. The issues that he's talking about in this alleged gag order, there is no evidence in the record of such. He was asked to produce it, it wasn't there. There's no gag order or anything. Matter of fact, Mr. Green's own statements regarding those particular cases, including his documents from the EEOC, were actually put into the record where he said, "I was suspended," where he said, "I was non-renewed." That is the basis for some of his lawsuits. None of those cases actually that are out there regarding Mr. Green say, "He's exonerated." They were settled. These things happen from time to time. We don't know the nature of the case, but it doesn't impact the case we have here. Because what is very clear from the hearing officer's recommendation is Mr. Green misrepresented his application. It doesn't matter whether he represented it two weeks ago, it doesn't matter whether he represented it 10 years ago under law. If he misrepresented it and that was material as far as his hiring, then that is a breach of his contract, that is a breach of board policies, and that is a breach of his ethical duties. Whether he's, all he needed to answer accurately or not is not the issue. The issue is, he even admitted during the hearing that he didn't answer accurately. Furthermore, his conduct during these things is actually a breach of multiple policies. The hearing officer found such, and that's part of the recommendation. Mr. Green talks about when he was put on administrative leave. Yes, he was put on administrative leave and then he was asked to return to the building. At one more time, he was sent to transportation. He was sent to transportation to actually pump gas. It ended up being that that happened, he was pulled from there, and he was brought to central office. He was actually asked to do some administrative tasks in central office. The unfortunate part about that is he would not even adhere to directives while at central office and had to be written up three additional times. That's also in the record. The other things that are in the record that Mr. Green brought up, unfortunately, nothing but solidified the issue that he has had previous directives regarding his type of conduct. The reason Mr. Green was not returned to the classroom is because he is a potential danger to students. The May 10th issue demonstrates that. His previous incident in 2016 where he knocked the students' feet everywhere, yeah, it was determined inconclusive because of both student and teacher actually decedent. And then back in 2000, when he was here the first time, Mr. Green was written up and he resigned. Yes, he did, but he was going to be proposed for termination at that time as well. Those documents are also in the record. If you look at the records from the other school districts, you see a pattern. Mr. Green was proposed because of the problems that he demonstrated, not only ALI as far as directives, but in other places as well. Once you start putting those together, you have your pattern. Now, from what I understand, Mr. Green actually has some really good teaching abilities. Unfortunately, that is not the issue and why it was brought for a proposal for termination as well as the recommendation from the hearing officer. The issues are and continue to be, he misrepresented the application, he violated board policy, and he breached his contract. That's what the hearing officer found, that is the recommendation from the hearing officer. And we are asking on behalf of the administration that the board adopt the hearing officer's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. Are there any questions by, from our committee of questions? The parties have completed their presentation and it is now time for us to make our decision on the issue before us. We must either adopt the findings of facts, conclusion of the law, and recommendation of the hearing examiner, or reject, or change the hearing examiner's findings of facts and conclusion of the law, and propose a grant of relief. If we find that substantial evidence does not support a finding of fact, the finding may be rejected or changed based upon the records and exhibits presented before the hearing examiner. Furthermore, should we determine that the hearing examiner did not correctly interpret the applicable AISD board policy or administrative procedures in the state and our federal law, we may reject or change the hearing examiner's conclusion of law. A conclusion of law may also be to change or reject. A conclusion of law may also be changed or rejected if a finding of fact that supports the conclusion of the law has been found by us not to be supported by substantial evidence. It must stay in writing the specific reason and legal basis for any changes or rejection. Any action we take must be supported by the board, by the record presented to the certified hearing examiner. Is there any discussion?
Do you have a question for attorney? Can you go back to executive session?
Yes. We'll shut at 9:53. We're going to executive session based upon Section 551, 9071. Purpose of a private consultation with the board attorney and any subject or matter of the last by law.
9:53.
9:53.
No, that's what time it went into executive session.
I'm answering the board's questions.
That's funny.
I was never known, for maybe, never been out like this. I've never told this, no, I've never told this, I ripped chicken. What did they do? So then, like, what did you do? It's Saturday. She goes to the section, she's always. So that may fall.
I think we're good. Don't go back.
Yeah.
It reminds me of that girl from the lady Parker, with the angels. Hey, it's good.
So, just, what I thought was, I mean, it's been, you know, much longer.
Right.
Yeah. You know, it's true, where the law, but maybe it's true. But you got to be sure.
Where does all we have to, you know, what?
I love to speak now.
All right, let the record show at ten fourteen, we're back in the session. Meeting has reconvened. Following this executive session, I'm going to ask, do I have a motion regarding the proposed termination of the term contract with Mr. Green?
Yes, Mrs. Wood, I have a motion on the move that we adopt the decision, a recognition of the certified hearing examiner about the findings of fact and conclusions of law, recommend that the certified hearing examiner and that we terminate Mr. Green's contract in employment with the District of Fairview.
Thank you, is there any other discussion?
May I have a second?
Executive session, I have a question. This is second by Ms. Key. All in favor of holding the recommendation? The record show six-zero, and this buffer is not here for this particular.
This is the executive session?
Hang on a second. Mr. Rayno?
Yes, I'd state that I may motion based on the hearing officer finding that Mr. Green misrepresents himself on his application.
All right, a letter notifying both parties of the section, of the action of the board should be prepared and signed by the manager of board services. As it is practical, looking at the time at ten sixteen, this hearing is now concluded.